Okay, yeah, we're already ready. All right. All right. Stanford Unbelievable.
Unbelievable. To the blood of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just for all.
All right. It's evening, welcome everybody to the town and manly as planning board meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025. We are in person and we're also hybrid online. Our attorney Jamie Sutton is online virtually with us this evening. The first item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from our March 24th meeting. I don't know if you see comments or discussion or a motion for approval.
I'm making one.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Rich, second by Arnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Judy of states, all right, motion carried, minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is Goodland Hills. This is just a status update. We received documents, new documents. They are under review and they are all in the document center online if anybody is interested in looking at them, but they're under our review at this point. So, the next item on our agenda is for Ferry Hutchinson. This is at 7090 Myers Road. This is on the agenda for a special use permit renewal for insult tech in East Syracuse, tax map number 045. Point dash 01 dash 02 point 3. I don't know if we have anyone here on behalf of the applicant or online. Hmm, nobody online, okay. So, and the board has reviewed this, it's a special permit renewal. This is actually the original special permit was issued in February of 1993. It looks like it was initially a 25 year permit that was then reviewed for the first time seven years ago. And now we do special permits for seven year terms, so it's up for renewal again. We do have a memo from the codes enforcement officer that there have been no violations issued to the property. So he is recommending a renewal be approved for a period of seven years and that would expire April 7th, 2032. So I don't know if anyone doesn't have any questions or comments. I'd love for a motion to approve the special use permit renewal for seven years.
All right, motion to renew the special use permit for seven years.
Okay, motion made by Judy, second by Don, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The special use permit is renewed for seven years until 2032. And that is for the insult tech on 7090 Myers Road. Okay, on the next item on our agenda is the Turnwood Development Corporation. This is on our agenda for an initial presentation. These are the hybrid senior apartments on Hybrid Street in Fayetteville. Tax map number 092. Point dash 01 dash 05 point 1. This is a planned unit development or P U V. So I know we have some people here on behalf of Leepah Project. So we'll definitely have all, we have documents, but if you would like to present to us what you have and what you would like to do.
Yeah, all right. How about that? My name is Anthony Rojas within Architects here representing the applicant. The hybrid senior apartments, it's a multi-unit residential facility specifically for seniors. It will be independent living. We also have a mixed use component within there with a small, say salon barber shop type tenant on the first floor. Right off the lobby entrance, bringing in that mixed use component. And then we also have a few affordable units as a part of the putt under your bi floor. Those affordable units will be dedicated to the Brookdale facility and the spouse, some of their residents. We were speaking with them throughout this entire development of the project and they made aware, made us aware of a need of housing for them and spouses of their residents. And the close proximity of this development would be very supportive of the residents as well. Additionally, with the putt, we have created, and in the site plan, you'll be able to see additional sidewalks connecting both this property with the Brookdale facility. As well as along Hybrid Street, getting more pedestrian access into town. We would be able to install new along the street there to increase the pedestrian connectivity with the remainder of the neighborhood. We've provided several, you know, images showing what this building could potentially, will potentially look like. It is a story structure. The fourth story is recessed and then there would be a lower level parking deck. So we've included 78 parking spaces interiorly in the restaurant site. So almost one, one on one, it's almost about one on one interior to exterior parking. The ratio of units, we have a mix of one bedrooms and two bedroom units. We have 102 units total in the project. And the reason for how we got to that number was as recently as our last meeting, we've had several meetings, not only with surrounding neighbors, but with the town as well. And, you know, they've requested, you know, an increase of units. And the way we did that was we reduced the square footage of the units and increased the quantity of them, just to increase density, knowing that the town has a housing need. Especially for this demographic to hopefully free up some single family homes in the area as residents move in here to create more housing stock locally. Additionally, in our, in our recent meeting, we did also meet with your new planning advisor, the town planner. Who saw this project and was very supportive of it. And I hope he shared some report with the, with the board here as to how that conversation went, but he was very supportive of this project, so. We think there were a couple of comments based on our meetings between the last time we were here and with the residents. Couple of primary, primary concerns of how we're responding to those. One was the location of the monument sign. There was concern about having a lit monument sign at the road. So what we did was we pushed the monument sign all the way to the building entrance, which is almost 150 feet away from the road instead of having it on the road. So we've located it here, as you can see here in the lower portion there, engaged it with the new patio area. One of the comments from that previous meeting was, could you create some outdoor gathering space or engagement space with the front yard instead of just in the backyard as we were previously presenting? So what we did was we created that space right off of the drive circle. So now residents have an outdoor sitting area on that front side engaging with the Brookdale facility and passersby.
Sorry, where is this on plans?
So in, right off in front of the drop off area. So in this plan, whoops.
Yeah, I'd like to add, the 3D image is two dimensional. We intentionally removed all the planting, planting, planting stuff there. One thing also to note, Anthony, was the, the sign was a freestanding boulder wall at the entrance. Now we've incorporated it with, the sign is on the, the actual plaza that'll be in front of the building, so it's 150.
Should party drive under.
Yes.
The sign is on there.
On the front of it, right. At grade, it's a still low monument sign, but it's, it's, it's on. This one might be rotated 90 degrees, but yeah, it couldn't rotate.
Mine kind of doesn't have that.
Do you mind if I take a look at it?
Mine kind of doesn't have that.
Do you mind if I take a look at it?
Well, this happens to be out there. You want, Anthony, do you know?
326.
It's on, it's on, it's on all of it.
320, dated 326.
Mine says 12. Yeah, mine says 12 as well. There's no order. It was received March 36th, so it says 12.
In, in the revision block?
Doesn't that make sense? Oh, yep. Yep.
3, 326.
Yeah, I see that now.
Do you mind if I see that?
I'm looking at the ones from online, but this is like a separate, I just.
That's from the.
So the stuff from online is not the same. Let's hold on my, I have to see that, I pulled it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so um.
Yeah.
So we pulled it off last night, yeah.
I should have, I had to pull see it, that's a better finding.
Are we submitted? So in this drop off area here, the darker black sections are the columns that come down. We extended that drop off the, the building over so that the 22 foot drive aisle becomes both covered aisles. So if somebody's there dropping a resident off, there's still some way to be able to get the rest of the traffic through. So when we extended that building outwards, that red kind of curved line out there, that would be the edge of the new patio out front. So open patio kind of beyond the columns, but within the columns is covered patio. So just a space for residents to be able to sit and, you know, just kind of engage traffic and any other pedestrians that are walking along. And gives them just another perspective on the property too, to kind of ease that drive circle instead of just having outdoor space towards the rear patio. That was a comment taken from the planning meeting.
Can, can I ask questions?
Sure.
You know, right, the, the way I see the differentiation, you don't have a P U D right now.
Well, that, okay, if it's about that, let's just let him finish.
Okay.
Let's let him finish the reasoning from now on.
Okay.
I didn't know if you had a question about that, okay.
I got fresh question about all of it because if they don't have a P U D, why are you looking at this?
I know, yeah, but let's let him finish the presentation and then we'll, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, the, the rest of the, the, you know, perspectives that were shown, just shows a variety of materials, warm wood tones, stones along the perimeter. So in, back to what I was saying, in addition to one of the resident comments about the monument sign, the other was about, is there a way of reducing the amount of light that's emitted from kind of windows? To not create this high glare visibility from the exterior. What we're looking at is a two-stage solution. One is we're looking at increasing the shading and glass to allow less light in or out of that glass so that we can reduce the amount of light transmission. And then the other is the window units we're also looking at is an integrated blind unit that will be able to be within an enclosed glass pane, kind of a third pane. That would allow for all of these units to have those shades right off the bat. So two ways of being able to reduce kind of that concern from the residents.
Sorry, please, I'm not, I'm trying to understand. There's a concern from the neighborhood that the light that they're seeing is going to be too much because of all the glass. And so you're proposing to increase the X amount of light out of the glass when it's into.
So the, so the shading, so the shading coefficient, you can, you can add a tint or film to the glass.
Mm-hmm.
So we're increasing that by creating a darker shade within that glass. We don't know if it's either going to be by tint or by film, but there is a solution of increasing that so that it minimizes the amount of light that comes through that glass.
Does that mean that the people inside won't get as much light from outside? Cause I don't know if in our area, we can really mess with that.
It will, it will slightly reduce that from the resident, but it's being responsive to the neighboring concerns. So you tell me, it's not, it's not going to really affect the quality of light on the interior. It will to a certain extent, but it, it really won't. It's just going to minimize kind of the amount of indirect light that comes out from the interior. The shading and the film could be placed on one side of the glass that will reduce kind of the direction in which that light can.
Okay, well, I won't make you go anymore, but I probably would want to revisit this at some point.
It was just trying to be responsive to neighbors' comments. And, you know, we, that's kind of a solution that came up there to respond to that.
I loved it.
So we've provided plans that again show the, the mix, mixes of one and two bedrooms. Again, the lower level plan shows the enclosed parking.
Could I interject a moment?
Sure.
Plans speak of a one and a half bedroom as well, a third category.
So the way.
Does that fit in one or two somehow and I just don't understand it, or is that a third category?
So the one and a half, we only labeled it differently because it's a den type space, an office slash den for someone to be able to use. So it is a room, but we're marketing them as a den type space. It's just an additional living space for somebody to use for.
Again, I don't know much about this, but does a building code or a window in a bedroom?
It does, in a bedroom.
But no closet, so there's no closet.
Not, not in a bed. Okay.
Yes. Good.
Is it closed off with a door?
Uh, yes. Yes, it's.
And that's a requirement by the fire.
I think that's a code question, but.
Yeah, I think, I thought like, just, I don't have any documents on this, but I thought it was, it has a closet, it makes it a bedroom.
That's right. Yep, and I believe, oh, I'll, I'll review them, but I believe all of the den rooms do are on a window. I'll check again, but I believe.
Always the ones with the half.
Oh, one of them has it outside, yeah, yeah, one of us, right.
Heard the question.
Right, right, yes, no, good question. Um, yeah, uh, but we will.
So it's kind of like a flex room.
City room slash office.
Office or.
Okay.
A large walk-in closet for some. And again, a couple of, a bunch of amenities based on the interior for the residents. On the first floor, we'll kind of zoom into here. Here you see off of the best of view, the salon type tenant off to the right. Mail package room for deliveries to the left and then a large common area for living in the center. Off to the right, you see kind of this larger commercial kitchen. The intent here is to provide a menu and service, food service for the residents, not for outdoor use. It's just for the residents to be, create basically a meal plan for them to take advantage of. So this is where we would be locating it. And then up on the third floor, you have this large community room in which they could, you know, enjoy their meals if they were to do it in a public setting. Or within their units and that's where they decide to take their meals.
A bit lighter for all food?
Uh, they would use the primary, uh, there's two elevators in the building, so they would use one for transport up to that upper level or to the unit themselves if it's basically delivered.
Anthony, it's a bit slower, louder, especially for the folks who are trying to see this.
Sure.
Online.
Sure.
So it's not your fault, it's the system.
Well, it's a new one.
Yeah, so it might be. I don't know if you can see this. We don't know. But just in case, yeah, and it's actually captioning us now.
That's good, that's good. And then on the second floor, we have a fitness center, a theater room for movies or sports games. And then an office space which would be more, the residents would be able to have a couple of computer stations, printers, things like that to be able to access that in a common area. The fourth floor units do have outdoor roof balcony type space. Each of those units except for one of them have an outdoor space, outdoor balcony space. So in the exterior renderings, you see the kind of the railing along the top side or behind parapet walls.
About another question.
Sure.
I believe I have the Garden Park Senior Apartments District Plan. I think this is the one to approve on the town board. In it, under the types of land uses, you have an A and a B, and in the B you have eight penthouse condominiums. Was that more or less what was going to be on that?
Yes.
Fourth floor, but now they're 22 kind of more sizable apartments. They not delineated the way that ones are on one through three, so something different happened on the fourth floor?
Yes, previously, when we presented the project, there were eight much larger units on the roof. And the request from our last meeting between the planner and the, and John Dear was, would it, would it be possible to reduce the scale of those to increase the quantity of units? So that's what we did, we reduced the, the square footage and increased the, the quantity. So yeah, that was the directive.
Thank you. You have solar panels on the roof?
Yes, so we do show solar panels on the roof. On the aerial there, we are studying to see how much more area we can place solar panels. It's really dependent on where our mechanical equipment ends up on the roof and how much free area we have. But that is something we're striving to achieve is to place solar panels upon that.
That sort of triggers one more question.
Sure.
I hear short G A F, I hear a question. Eight, I'm sorry, nine, this closed action meter sees the state energy code requirement, no is checked.
Oh, uh, it shouldn't be no. It should be yes.
No, it's not no.
Yeah, we wouldn't be, yeah, allowed to do that, so that should be yes. Good question. So yes, the intent is, and I guess the, the option was open about keeping the drive circle there at the front. We will be maintaining the drive circle and from a, a timing perspective, it's the agreement we have with Brookdale currently on being able to upgrade that road. And for them allowing us access and taking over that, the ability to, to upgrade that drive circle. And knowing that we're getting closer to, I know we're just on the tail end of this one, but if we don't get moving on construction and be breaking ground to be able to get out of the ground in time, we don't want to lose the season. So we incorporated all the other comments, I believe, from our last meeting, John Dear and the planner. Open to hear any questions?
And for your end, both sides are, it's only one.
Into our side?
From.
Two build to a building.
Oh, yes.
Only one.
Yes.
But you can't access, you can go for Brookdale, or whatever, right, yeah, else it's like that. Wouldn't, um, I want to let Rich ask his questions, but real quick, you mentioned in the presentation that you were putting sidewalks, or what, where are those going to be?
Yes, so let me open up the site plan that shows up there.
I was going to update everybody, we, we always had the connector sidewalk in the front along hybrid. I think, I believe you were the one that suggested a secondary walk. And what we did is we extended the back of the building to the existing Brookdale loop in the back. So now you can connect to the sidewalk in second location.
So the yellow one was there as a part of the P U V with, that's along hybrid. So that we're connecting and that we're bringing all the way in to connect to our building as it moves downward. The new sidewalk based on our last planning meeting was, can we connect to this, in this rear one, to the sidewalk along the Brookdale facility? So that's a new sidewalk that we added. And the response was, we want to be able to, if there are going to be residents of our development with family at Brookdale, we want them to be able to walk to them. And there is some great changes. So the way we did that was we allowed that, that sidewalk to have it along the rear end side of our property.
If we brought that walk up the driveway would exceed ADA, it would be like 78%. So we've got to be intentionally located at a lower elevation. And we're also, last time we had a gravel fire protection road in the back. Now from, from in Architects back Plaza, that'll be paved all along the back of the building and connect to the existing hybrid sidewalk system. So there'll, there'll be a nice connector walk there. And that's something the attorney has to go back to Brookdale for permission.
Thank you. Okay. Rich, do you want to add to your comments?
I'll start with a couple of questions and comments and I'll go back to where I was trying to start before.
True.
But I know we had discussions where I should say, um, the other side, not Brookdale. You wanted to put some sidewalks in the Brookdale side and they said they did not want people walking past rooms. So that it would be confusing for patients looking out and seeing somebody walk by. I don't know if that's still their feeling or if you have some discussions with sidewalks on your property and what impact that has. I'll just throw that out, we need to have answers.
So who we could ask? Just, just adders in contact with Brookdale to go over that, that one change if you can point to it. We, we just added one connection point, there's a dead end walk right at the end of the circle where Brookdale, if you can point to that. Their sidewalk dead ends at the end of their facility and we're just simply continuing it if you can point to that.
I can point.
On your property or on their property? I can point here. This is an existing walk from Brookdale and it terminates here.
Yep.
And what we're doing is we're continuing a walk from the back of our proposed facility to line up with theirs.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not on your property. On our property, it's just, uh, you cross the road. So we're not adding any walks on their property other than.
Hybrid.
Hybrid side on the, on the front side.
Which we heard. Right now, this is from history, that roadway, the entranceway has always been owned by Brookdale. And you're going to improve it.
Yes.
And then who's going to own it after you improve it?
Public, public road is what our, that's the aim, is to build it, the town standards and have it dedicated to public road.
Yeah, I know, that, okay, I'm just wondering. So that's, that's one item. That was never part of town property. And if the town is going to assume it, and I'm not sure if I have any say in it or if it's all town board, I want some money for it. I mean, we're not going to take on liability and responsibility for maintaining and repairing without being compensated for it.
Well, you're going to, you're going to be collecting a lot of tax dollars on this development and that's, I think, the benefit of being able to, it's getting this project and being able to have the size of the development company.
Rich, then, I'm just wondering, that's why I asked. Brookdale actually approached us and asked us to take over the maintenance. They can no longer, nor do they want to take. I'll ask you, Brookdale? This is Brookdale, a well tower who owns the property and then Brookdale manages the facility. They approached us about the idea of taking over the maintenance of the road because they can no longer afford to maintain the road. They realized, you know, it's, it's coming to the end of its useful life and they're going to have to do something to upgrade the road. So part of the understanding is would we maintain the road and then dedicate it to the town? Our concern is, when you have two facilities, and I'll give you a hypothetical, what if we had a major snowstorm and we didn't get the road plowed early enough so that their employees could get to their patients? It, it, it kind of causes conflict. We would rather the town through our taxes maintain that road and we're going to. So you're really going to let town take the lack? No, no, that, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm, I'm saying if we're going to pay the kind of taxes that we would pay with a facility like this, that road is such a small road and the town's always used that and plowed and turned around there. So it's, it's really not a big ask, we're improving the road at our cost. It's not costing the town anything to improve the road. And you're not looking for a pilot agreement on this project? I didn't say that. Well, that's what, that's what I'm trying to extract here. If we're going to take on liability of maintenance and repair of that road, I want to know what you're willing to put on the table. Okay, that's fair. And, 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 yeah, looking, I'm on the planning board, and so I may not have any input, I'm just trying to think of how this all fits together. Yeah, and part of the connectivity, understand this too, is we offered to Brookdale, which they were hats and horns about. The ability to set aside X number of units in our building on a month to month basis for family members whose family is staying at Brookdale. Because one of their biggest concerns is there's no place for those people to stay in the area that's affordable. And they end up commuting 20 or 30 minutes every day to see their spouse. Whereas with connectivity, they can literally, and we were willing to even offer a golf cart or golf carts for those people to go back and forth to see their, you know, their loved ones.
And those are going to be first units, right?
Correct.
Like a hotel service, like?
Well, it's not a hotel, but it would be month to month.
Oh, month at a time.
Yeah, so we're, we're not put the burden of them having to stay a year, you know, if the person's, you know, is deceased or something, it's month to month. It's, it's more just a courtesy to.
Not like a night or two and then.
Well, it'd be month to month.
Well, I'm just curious if it's like something like a hotel where there's like.
For, for the length of, so the, the, their long-term patients, when they enter this facility and they would need to have a, a family member, a resident, be a resident of Brookdale. So knowing that their length of time is basically what we're responding to.
When we talked to Denise, who's the manager, she said month to month would be ideal.
Yeah, okay, I was just curious for that.
Just one final point, Rich, we're, we're not asking the town to take over a used road. We're ripping up, right now it's existing old asphalt with zero drainage structures. We're taking out all of the asphalt, we're adding stone. We're adding stone, we're adding five new drainage structures, pipe, and it'll be built up to town standards. So it's essentially a new road built to town standards.
Enter into a coliseum.
Yes, that will all be new pavement within the, at the developer's cost. You're getting a new road built to town standards.
It's all kind of shaded, that whole shaded area.
Yeah, that's all, all new pavement. We're not taking over a whole road, we're taking over a new road, like just pretend it's a new subdivision. That's a new, that's a new coliseum, built to town specs.
Okay.
So we're not asking anything special.
But the town will maintain their, their coliseum?
No, that's right.
That's right, they will remain private.
Yeah, the right of way, it's, it's ironic because they had an existing right of way line because the previous developer never finished and went all the way to, to make it dedicated to a four, whatever we call it. We're designing a full town road within the property line to our deck.
So two questions. One, is this even a decision for us or is this a town board thing that's done?
It's highway.
Well, I don't think that was my next question. I don't think it's done. I think, yeah, I don't think it's done. Yeah, you guys might know if it's done, I don't think it's done, but it is a town board and highway superintendent.
We do, we do, it's done legally with our agreement, with our attorneys in Brookdale, that they are willing to dedicate that upon dedication to the town as a public road.
I mean, I'm just curious on what Rob has to say about this.
He's had input for sure.
Yeah, when we had our work session, Rob said either way works for him.
Okay.
Because they can use it to turn.
Those are questions that I was going to get to later. But the, the, what I was starting to say is, right now, you do not have a PUD. Would you agree?
Like, will you have the PUD approved through the town?
Yeah. It was approved.
It was approved December, yeah.
Somebody said they knew it.
Well, it was sent, yeah, the PUD, agreed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And according to the PUD.
Which is for the, everybody's knowledge, was approved by the town board December 6, 2023, when they also did the negative senior declaration and the zone change.
Right, I'm just, where I'm going with this is, in that PUD, if it is the latest one, the owner shall be required to apply for site plan approval no later than 180 days after approval of the PUD, which would have been June or something of 2024. So in my mind, as I look at the documents, you do not have a PUD.
So the town board's decision on delaying our being able to present this project to the board was because they was getting, they were getting a planner onboard and they wanted to use this as their first project to start the new process. And we couldn't do that until Colliers was brought onboard, which was an extended amount of time to be able to get that agreement in place. But then we finally had our meeting a couple of weeks ago, like three or four weeks ago. And then, once we had that meeting, we submitted right away, literally days after, to implement their comments.
But you've got nothing in writing that extends the PUD to take into consideration.
If, if that's something we, so John Dear said if that was something that needed to be done on their end to be able to modify that, that they'd be willing to do that and accomplish that in the next meeting, but.
And I talked with John Dear too, and so if we have, as we're reviewing this and we have comments, edits, changes, they can do an amendment to the PUD.
Okay, so I would like to be a part of that meeting.
Rich, we, we initiated numerous times to have those meetings. And at the town's request, they asked us to delay that because they were waiting to hire the town planner.
And, and as I'm.
Excuse me, thanks, Rich. So from a legal standpoint, I mean technically sitting here right now, there, there is not a, a PUD, but the town board is aware of, of that issue and the delay. And they're going to take that up as soon as possible, so.
No, I understand that. I have several other comments on the PUD that I would like to at least be heard so that they can, if they so choose.
Yeah, and we can record, Jamie, do you mind? We can record any edits or changes to get to the town attorney?
I've got, I've got so many modifications and comments that if, I don't want to take it.
Do you want to summarize and then maybe we can send them on to Jamie?
I'd be more than happy to.
I agree with Rich on, does that work, Jamie?
Well, I, yes, yes, I mean, I guess the question is, i- is there any other consensus from this board of some, of some items that should be modified? But I, I do have to say, I'm not sure the town's willing to go back to the drawing board. So I would be judicious about that.
And I believe.
I know they're willing to make, I, I know they're willing to make edits and change, they're, they can do an amendment. So they can make some edits and changes, but, yeah, but it's ultimately.
Well, I'm going to, yeah, the PUD says seventy-eight units, we just heard 102 units. That should be modified in the PUD. I see this thing called garden park senior apartments. I didn't see the word senior anywhere else in the document. I didn't even see it defined. Is it 55 and up, 65 and up, 60 and up? Does, do both occupants have to be over the age limit? There's just a lot of things that need to be clarified, in my mind anyway, before this thing gets finalized. But as I say, I'm just one vote, but I wa, I would like to see some modifications be done prior to the the, I guess it'd be, whatever.
Reprise.
Yeah.
The PUD, yeah.
Well, I, I, sure, and I think it's not just the modifications, but also making it the way it's currently being presented, which is a little bit different possibly. But I, I don't know what all your comments are, so I, I don't know the answer to that.
Whatever you want to sit down with anybody to have discussion about that and see where it goes.
Okay. Well, and maybe we can do that, yeah, I can, I mean.
In the meantime, can you please send those, those to me, not the whole board?
Sure.
Okay.
So I have, I, I agree with Rich on a lot of this, but I feel like this, when I looked at this, I didn't even, I thought this was proposed because there's so many things that are different than the plans. And I'm not, I'm not saying that I have any, you know, I'm not going to go through and like go through it, but I'm not sure that it's our job to update what this says to meet the project that you're proposing. And I think that if there need to be changes made to this, because the project has sat for a little while, which really should be documented, that they need, it needs to come at that point. There's a whole process to go through with the PUD. Otherwise, it just becomes, hey, let's make this document up and modify it willy-nilly whenever we want so that we can build a project that we want to.
Yeah, so the, just to clarify.
Well, I don't think, definitely not really nilly.
And just.
It'd be an amendment process.
And just to clarify, there's.
I think it seems the town needs to do what it does with them.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to churn through this continually unless there's a clear document that the town's approved that reflects the current state of what the project is.
Right, and I don't think that.
And we're not there, yes.
Well, no, and I also don't think that it would be a waste of time. I mean, I have a list of comments and questions and other people do too, that it would be a good opportunity to kind of get some of that out there so that when you come back with a revised, updated PUD for us to review your project against, that we've taken advantage of the opportunity to kind of throw some things out there that might help it become an even better project that, you know, we can work with.
And I think we're, we're always obviously open to comments and concerns and we'll, we'll take all of those as consideration. I will, I mean, we were here last time after, during this process of implementing the PUD and I believe a lot of your comments were submitted to the town board for consideration at that point. I do remember there were many questions at that point. But happy to take them again and we'll, we'll definitely update them. I will, I just, would like to clarify just one thing. The changes that you see before you are not because the project sat for a while or anything that the developer actually implemented on, on their own. It's all responsive to concerns or suggestions or issues that were brought upon the town. So it's all responsive to that and it's not brought by the developer. We were on a, on the track to submit based on how we formed that PUD at one point and then we're recommended to make certain changes.
And, and this is, this is a new process for us to, we've only had one PUD.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, some learning as we go along.
Sure.
As I look at this, I can't approve a project that has 102 units when I got a PUD says 78. I mean, I just, we gotta have a notification.
Again.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So Jamie, are you on that? Yes, hold on, where she went? Um, before we get on the comments, I want to wrap up the PUD discussions before we move to comments from the board on the project itself and the site plan, et cetera. Jamie, would you suggest that any of us planning board members who have comments about the PUD, could we send those to you in an email?
Yes, I think that would be best because, you know, we can't be meeting, you, you know, without a forum, which might also include all those, you know, whatever emails. And then we can go through them and then try to convene again about it. And, and potentially come to a consensus or, or not, but I think it's best that whatever is sent to the town board has a consensus.
Yeah. Okay.
Is this mean our comments somehow go through a conglomeration process and then the boards are there included in the town board's deliberations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, that's the idea.
Okay, so if you can get those to Jamie this week sooner than later, that'd be great. All right, go ahead. And now Erin, you had some, do you want to go through your comments on the, your other comments?
Um, I think, I think we hit everything.
Okay. Um, the PUD was actually the first thing on my list because it looked so different than what the plans were showing. And I might jump around a little bit, I'm sorry. I just have some bullet points because I know you're going to be coming back and doing stuff. So some of the stuff I wanted to throw out there, maybe you've thought about it and maybe you haven't. The architectural image of the building, while I think that it's attractive, I don't think that it necessarily suits the context of the architecture in the area. I think it's, maybe some of the specific materials are, but it is, it seems to be a much more contemporary look to it, even though you've been creative and effective at minimizing the bulk with material changes. It's an attractive building, but I don't think that it's, it suits the character and the style of the, of the area in general. And, I mean, even just looking right across at Brookdale, that actually, you know, they're kind of fighting against each other a little bit, especially with the large scale of the new building and then the lower profile and stuff with the other. And I think that there could be a way to tie the, tie the two together, you know, somehow. Or, you know, the, it's a contemporary building and not in a contemporary restyle area. And, you know, scale-wise, I think it fits. I'm not, I don't have a problem with the amount of stories or anything like that. I think the parking area is great. You know, it relax, having to leave that on elevator, so I don't know if you're close on code.
Erin, and I, if you don't mind me, on that issue of, of the style of the building, I guess before we send this group off into a, a different direction architecturally, I, I guess I'd like the other planning board members to weigh in. I have no opinion on our architecture, by the way. I just try to stay in my lane. I do think that our planning consultant found it to be a handsome building, so.
It is, it looks nice.
They, you know, I don't, so I, I'm, I don't know if I'm following you about it, the direction it's going, if we're sending it in the direction.
Yeah, it's just that it's an attractive building, but I don't think that it, the, the style genre of it suits the context of the architecture in the area. I don't have a problem with the building's look. I think it's a nice looking building, I just don't think it fits right here.
So my question is, because that's a pretty substantial statement. If there are others that agree with that, then we're, we're sending this developer into a different direction. So I'm just wondering if anyone else has had the chance to weigh in on that particular.
If our, if our planner is okay with it, I'm okay with it. Basically, what we're seeing is it's consistent with the area. Right, you've got Wildwood Ridge, you've got the Alzheimer's, you've got this, right? So if you look at, you look at the comprehensive plan, there's a comprehensive plan that's pinpointed this area for high density housing. So, you know, it hits all of those notes and that's what we sent off to you folks this afternoon.
Yeah, and I think, again, I, I always have the comprehensive plan with me, so, you know, looking at the, and obviously these are just four pictures out of the world of many photographs, but I think the idea, like our planner pointed out in his comments to us as well is, you know, it's, it's different building materials and different colors and that's what we've been looking for and, um, and the style rather than these two bottom pictures that are just stone, you know, and, well, again, I'm not a architect either, so. Um, but, you know, they're just stone and this plain facade. So I'm, I, I, I think it looks really nice too. And I think, you know, it may not, I see what you're saying, Erin, where it doesn't reflect Brookdale necessarily, but I think we are, you know, the town wants to be, the feedback we got from the town during the comprehensive plan is we want to also be progressive and, you know, and move with the architectural design and, and not keep building the same buildings. So that's my personal thoughts.
Brookdale itself, its architecture does not fit our overall plan.
No.
So that's.
I don't, I agree, it's, but I feel like it's a little bit closer. I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that you should go back to the dry board and scrape off all your facade and plaster Brookdale on it. I'm just making a comment that, you know, I think there could be ways to do that as a, as a creative thing. I understand that, that it tracks back down into building and all the time, you're scheduling all these kinds of things. But I would be remiss if I did not share that as a, as a comment. Like I started with that item, I'll say, I, I think it's a really nice looking building.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that you've done a lot with that picture, especially that it shows it and navigating some of the complexity to that site. But I don't know if there's a way to bring it down. I think if you look at, if you're driving up, I used to live in Wildwood Ridge years ago, but driving up High Bridge, I think that's a nice sight as you're driving up to see that, to see the different colors and things like that. We're doing like that. And then on your right, on your left, you got Wildwood Ridge, so I think it fits in really nice.
We incorporated a lot of natural materials, wood and stone. And remember, our backdrop is a hundred foot hill. So it blends into the natural topography of the site itself. And the fact that as you drive up High Bridge, the building is really only a two-story building because you're going to upgrade at that point. And Brookdale is a two and a half story building. So we try to keep it, the massing and the scale consistent with Brookdale. But, yeah, the planner, he thought it was, he said if I had any comments, they would be better. Because I, I really like what you've actually done.
So what, what, what we looked at here is exactly what you said, Judy, right? When you come around the road, there's curb appeal and during their work session, John did bring that up. And what he said, it's, it's in his memo here. There's curb appeal coming up, coming the other way, it's kind of tucked in around behind it. There's some buffering, there's some landscaping. And you know, when we, when we talked about it, we said, let's keep the landscaping out so that the board can see the building itself, right? When you put the landscaping back in, you've got the buffering, you've got the trails, you've got a sidewalk. You know, you've got a lot of things that are happening here that give it the curb appeal exactly like Judy said when you come around. The, the way the building's situated, right, faces that road just on a little bit of an angle.
Erin, yeah.
And then, and then the other way, coming back, it's tucked in, kind of like Tom said, a little bit below grade, right? And with, with the underground parking and some screening next to the parking that, that buffers that coming that way.
This perspective here is from that opposite direction. So you're actually coming from the top of the hill down. And his concern was, does this detail wrap around all sides? And the answer was yes, because many, sometimes developers will dress the front and not necessarily the back. But we, we carried a lot of the details and, and a lot of those elements around the back, what we, what we would consider the back, but it's still very highly visible corner coming down High Bridge.
Well, and that doesn't have the vegetation showing how many.
No vegetation, right? So all the screening and vegetation, like, we took a lot of it off.
One of the things that architects always get a lot of criticism, not a lot of praise, but one of the things that the planner pointed out as well is when we added the additional units and we extended the porch chair in the front, when you're driving up High Bridge, it actually cuts off half the building visually and it drops the scale. So really, image. So really, image wise, when you come around Brookdale, you're only seeing half the building. So it, it's not an imposing building, scale wise.
No, I don't think it.
Yeah.
More of a step, you're stepping, you know, just a four and a half up to the four.
That's correct, but that porcupine chair really fits the building visually.
I don't have a problem with the scale of the building, it was more just some of the detailing. But that's just a comment, right? And so that, I don't have a problem with. Did you do geotech and all that stuff on the slope behind, so that's off it?
Yes.
There we have a report on that.
Slope stability.
And not only that, but what's been added here is, is a fast slope stability, if you look.
I saw that, what is that made out of?
Well, we, we, I know Doug, Doug had talked about the last submission where the US Forest Service has a, an E-wall, but actually, Bill, one of the big points of discussion at the beginning of this project is what are you going to do with all those huge boulders all over the place? So we're, I don't think, Doug, we can, we can play with this thought, but we were going to relocate a lot of those boulders to the back and mix in some smaller boulders and make more of a natural knee wall as opposed to coming in with an engineered wall on a natural setting in the back of the facility. And then where we get a, where the retaining wall gets close to the building, we would switch to a traditional retaining wall. So when you're looking out your window, it would be right by the back patio, we have a more formal wall. So that detail is, is, uh, is being worked out, so. But we, we were able to have the geotech drive down the sheet pile a little, a little deeper and we adjusted the building a little bit, so now the building, the building wall is actually retaining the slope. Will create a flat area off the building and have a little step wall that'll intercept stones and a little bit of movement on that slope. But the geotech report came back a lot more favorable than I expected. It was good, it was a good report, Danielle, that's been submitted with the last round. And we were, I just, I just want one more thing real quick was, this geotech report, I don't want to explain it, Anthony doesn't want to explain it. We want to bring the geotechnical engineer to explain exactly what's happening with this wall.
I think we're fine with that, the report, we'll review the report, yeah, it's okay.
Okay, if you have any questions, you can explain to a much higher level than I could, but we were.
So the other thing that we, we spoke about, when we spoke to the group, if you look at that front, front corner closest to High Bridge, you know, one of the things we thought might be nice would be to pull a park back, remember, to, to the, to the front of the building to get a little bit more green space. But in talking to that, that, that was an area that we, we really needs the parking there because a lot of the parking wants to be in the front, so people have access to the building, knowing who the end users are going to be. But I do see some bad parking spots there and I would strongly discourage that because that starts to approach the front yard, right? I, I think if we need, you know, the parking, if there's a problem.
Seven on the front.
Seven on the front.
We do, we do need those, Doug, with the increased parking count. What I, what I would suggest is traditionally we specify a, a four, four to six or six to eight foot.
Before we've been done, before we've been done looking, looking at these things, that's not consistent with our comprehensive plan to have parking in the front yard, right? So I would, I would strongly discourage that.
I'm, I'm pretty, I'm having a hard time understanding how you use the parking anyway, honestly. With the number of space.
So we use one parking space for one bed and two parking space for two beds.
About a night and a half.
We consider that a one bed. Because it's, it's just accessory space to the inner.
Even with all the underground.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems reasonable.
But, but to Doug's point, some of the, and the planner brought this up as well, there are some, some of our parking is per the code in the front yard and what I would propose is putting in taller evergreens, not putting in four to six or six to eights, put in some eight to tens and ten to twelves. That's what they'll go in as, and evergreens, good evergreens.
Why are you talking about doing this?
Right along the road, you can point to that. Between High Bridge and exit lane coming out of the, the parking garage, we would add
to hit the PUD counts on what we do to parking.
You'd want to actually put in those seven.
If we modify it, then we don't.
Oh, we don't, we don't want to put those in. We don't want to put those, those are land bank spaces, that's, we wouldn't put.
Since, since we have to go back and modify the PUD, if the tom board's amenable to reducing the ratio instead of one per bed is slightly lower, then we could modify.
I misunderstood, we don't want to put those in unless we're pushed to, to put it in.
How many parking garages, were there eighty-seven, seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight.
So I don't know how great an idea it is in having people coming out of there with cars potentially pulling in and out of those certain spaces. I think that would be a problem.
Yeah, they were reserved spaces, we don't want to put those in.
And then there's more over by the dumpster.
Yes, if the board's uncomfortable with the parking provided, we don't, we don't want to do it, but if he'd be there, that's where they would go.
I think when you look at the comprehensive plan, you know, one of the things that's in there is like, we'd rather have green space than asphalt.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to do.
Do it paradise.
And one, another thing to keep in mind is the parking count, but there's also the reality, Tom and I talk about this all the time, a lot of people this, this age bracket have summer homes or winter homes. So they're, so these, you're not going to have all these parking spaces.
There's a lot, could be a lot of snowbirds in this building.
Erin, I just, a good question on that one, I'm sorry. It's about the boulders. So I'm not familiar and I wasn't on the planning board when all that happened, but it seemed to me like this was more of a fill. I might be totally wrong. If, if the, where the boulders are and have been there for a long time, is that been used as fill-in fill whenever you can? Do we have to, have you looked at it? Is there some remediation that used to be happening because of that fill?
Oh, we, we. Phil's certainly aware of the, and we had a.
There is a, there is a violation, I hope so. For bringing in the boulders.
Yeah.
But when we spoke to the applicant, part of the site plan is to remediate that to take care of the violation, so.
And the remediation will be approved by the EPA?
No, no, it's all clean fills, right? But what you're, but what you're seeing here, it doesn't show the boulders, right? So I, I'm assuming they're either going to be crushed on site or they're going to be,
Exactly.
or they're going to be covered with topsoil.
Aware of, we're not aware of anything about boulders, what you're saying is it's clean.
Yes, correct, it's clean though.
And we don't have to do any testing for it.
Right, right. And, and the codes officer, you know, when this happened a few years ago.
Thank you, so thank you, Erin.
He put, he put a stop work order on it, right?
It was the previous owner that brought that in, not us.
So, back to the parking, really quick, on the chart, and I'm sorry, I need better glasses, but, um, it says calculations, one hundred and forty-four spaces total, but the required is one thirty-two.
That's, we, that's not the latest chart unfortunately.
Oh, okay. Not only that, if you calculate the number of units, you set two for a two bedroom,
so that's ninety, that's out of eighty. And then for one bedroom, there's thirty and twelve, that's forty-two, and out of eighty is two hundred and twenty-two parking spots.
So I think maybe just reevaluating parking in general, and kind of seeing what can be done.
Yep, and we will present to the town board the ratios.
I guess that's a good question, before we recirculate questions on incremental submissions, we probably should have our update, an updated set here to the town.
Yeah.
I want, I want, I don't want any. This was, just, just to be clear, this was an update, we weren't looking for site plan approval. I mean, I, I wouldn't expect that, but we, we came with an, with an update and it's, it's clear that between the, we wanted a little more feedback on our update. Now that we have that, we'll incorporate those comments and, and we'll, we'll, we're going to do a full submission. It's the only way to do it.
I think that's getting all the sat, having this conversation is a good way to, um,
And you picked up the, the DA app needs a correction, the parking count needs a correction. We, this, this is a new idea that we went over with John Deere, but you guys weren't, weren't in the mix, so now we have it all up to date.
We continued moving good faith, waiting on the town to hire the planner and they asked us, but rather than delay the project, we continued with the drawings. So our drawings have progressed during that period and really tonight was to introduce the project to you. And we understand, because I have questions too, and I think most of the town officials with the pod, exactly, is it a variance, is it amendment, what does it entail? But it was really at the direction of our last work session that we added a lot of, or not a lot, but additional units and made some of these changes. And so that's where we are today. These changes are really the direction of the town and we're just reintroducing them to, to you guys, the planning board. And knowing we'll have to go back before the town board, that was your interview.
But to your parking, I have one question, one question, I think about parking. Um, the electric charging spots, how are those determined? And are those not, they're not in addition to, they're part of? So how do you know how many spaces to put in?
We committed, we committed, it's not true, but we did commit to a certain number in the pod, so we'll be providing at least that many spaces.
I mean, it sounds like everything in the PUD is up for grabs, so you want to, I mean, I've heard questions and comments from people recently about there's, there are never anybody parked there or they're always full, like all over the place.
We would, we would grow that as the need grows, so we would start out with a certain number, but obviously if we have more residents with them or there's a need over the years.
Are you doing like a percentage of total spaces? How are you?
It was.
How, is it just really like a random guess?
It was.
It's a tournament.
Because.
There's, there's not a lot of guidance standards, yeah.
Um, you know, if you have all these snowbirds and they're driving back and forth, they're not driving electric cars back and forth, or was it your number or Tom Ward's number or?
It was more based on history, so down, we just took like downtown Syracuse. All the stations they put in, the large parking spots and what ratio they were using for electric spaces, charging spaces versus all of the lot, and that's kind of.
But those are commuters and stuff, they need to weigh more.
It would be, right, so if we were kind of in that range, we knew we were safe, we were kind of over, overly conservative in that number.
Because there's four.
But the intent is the, the infrastructure will be there, that, our baseline will be what's on the drawing and then if they're well utilized, we can add kind of it and provide more units. We're not going to not put them in and then dig up our whole lot, so we have.
And there's a national grid grant that covers a lot of that infrastructure, so we would be.
So I don't, I don't think it really, right, what Anthony's going to do, he's going to look at parking requirements in aggregate, right? Whether cars are diesel, gas, electric or hydrogen, really doesn't matter, right? They're, they're all, they're all, well, parking's there, right? If he starts with four, it's going to be a percentage, right? So the rest of the two hundred parking spaces are something else other than electric. If that starts to morph, then the, right, it's going to be an open market thing where the owner of the building is going to have to put more in.
We'd have to fill the.
Are the parkings, are parking spaces underneath assigned to specific dwelling units?
They would be.
So there'll be no chargers under there because.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't want charging, chargers in an underground under residence, we're going to leave them all. We wouldn't want those charging stations in underground, we're going to keep them outside.
I'm clear.
So, so the other thing, right, and I'm looking around, but I think you're the only one that was on the board when we did Resort Lifestyles. Were you on when we got it?
Oh, yeah.
Right, and we had the same discussion of what type of parking should or should not be there, right? And what we found was for fifty-five and over, right, the parking is less. Anthony tested that, substantially less. Some people don't even have cars.
Right, hopefully, I mean, that would be ideal, right?
Yeah, where they have one only.
Or there's.
Where your people have two cars.
Public transportation, so that was another question, has it talked about, um, like a van service? Or something like that, and I'm wondering, like, how does that work?
Well, I mean, basically what's been described to me is, is very similar to what's with Resort Lifestyle.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you're, you're talking that everything's self-sustaining, there won't be theater, there's barber shops, there's dining.
Vans fit normal parking spaces.
So one of those is going to be for the van to live in?
It, it could be true.
We're, we're independent as opposed to a system.
Because it's all in the PUD. Like if it's in the PUD, then I want to make sure that it's represented or noted or marked on the plan so that later on, there's not confusion or question, especially since you're going to be revisiting this and looking at it. We haven't done a lot.
Yep.
And so, um, I'm actually happy that the road will be heated to the town as long as the town is willing to take it on because I can get helps with access for EMS and other things like that. And I think that people, when they approach a road like this, especially if it's built to town's best, that it's, um, what you would expect to encounter. You would not, because there's multiple things here, especially because they look different, that you wouldn't expect that to be a private drag. And I think it, it's a good thing, although I know that the towns are diverse.
And Erin, there's been a lot of discussion about the monument sign, but the next level, we would layer in directional signage, so you would come down the public road, it would be Brookdale main entry, a little directional sign of right, right, and then a little straight arrow to, for checking. There'd be a do not enter sign coming out of the, the, you know, exit of the facility. So we will layer those, and we could, that's something we can easily add into the next submission.
So that falls in, um, something that I was looking at with like wayfinding and things like that. Super important for a facility like this, especially where you have the two compatible uses. And I like that you were thinking about sidewalk connectivity. I would really love, and you've got a pickleball court and a pergola in the outdoor patio. And I would love to see you consider taking that circulation pattern and wayfinding to the next step and having a complete loop that people could walk. Um, there's some dead ends now, it's like it's kind of there, but.
Well, the, the challenge there is I'm trying to stay within the ADA compliance.
I get it, but maybe you end up having a couple steeper ramp transitions and landings or something like.
The only way to do it was with stairs, you'd have to have like three switchbacks and that'd be really.
Then maybe there's a closed loop at one end, or it'd be nice for people to be able to do as much of a loop as possible um, with wayfinding because of the, of the use, especially if someone's been visiting somebody at Brookdale and they're coming back, they might want to take a walk before they, you know, move on. Thinking like.
Well, then I would have to add a nine, nine ADA section.
Like, so either incorporated with, um, into where you could go over towards Brookdale and back around, maybe not around behind the building, maybe the, yeah, I know you have that closed doors. But then you've got with the round the back of the stormwater facility, maybe there's a bridge that comes over by the end of the building and you can have a loop. I mean, I'm asking you to consider it because I think that it would be important and it would be an asset and it would also help to achieve the things that you've listed that you intend to do in PUD, right? And then as far as that goes, the surface of it should be something that is stable.
What's shown on the plan is, is paved to put walkways in the drainage esment. Not desirable, but that Brookdale area in purple up, uh, along next to the green up there, that's all green space. There's picnic tables, people that are there walk back there, but it's not a place that Chris Danner was comfortable adding another sidewalk in the drainage.
I wouldn't, well, today I went there and it was all full of garbage.
If you go there, it's summer, it's very well used and maintained. It's, it's a time of year.
It is, I wasn't sure if it was that or if it just was like.
No, in the, no, in the summer, there's, there's people that use the benches and.
So is there a way to connect the pedestrian paths or something, right? Like, well, I'll leave it at that.
Well, we added the one that Valerie said to, to make it, um, I guess, I'll try. But it's going to take, there's going to be a section of stairs in there because they can't, and ramps.
Well, and maybe there's a part that you can only go on if there's stairs and there's a sign.
Yeah, I think, I think I would recommend it, one non-ADA section, right where.
Yeah, I don't think.
Let's get the sun right now, let's go.
I know, first I got to get my pointer up.
Yeah, look, you can, can you zoom that down a little bit? Right there. I think the place where it makes the most sense.
Like there?
Yes, you're right, because what happens is, what happens now is you come out the front with your, and you walk over to the trash enclosure or if you're going to your car, but if we do a drop, a walk down here, right on the curb line, it'd be like eight percent, which in the snow is not a good place to be. But what we could do is put a sidewalk here, come across and there'd be a set of steps that you could come down, a, a small set of steps, a landing and other set of steps, come down here. And then you could walk around here, do a loop. Here, it's, to be honest, that's a back parking lot to Brookdale. I was out there three times last summer and they, they could fit forty, fifty cars back there, there were five.
I know.
So the reality is people would come across here, they would walk on this pedestrian, existing walkway here, existing walkway here, and then when they get to the back parking lot, people are going to walk through that parking lot that has five or six cars on it mid-dead.
Well, but is that something that you have to think about your comfort level with and make sure it's signed properly?
I think, yeah, I think, I think that's reasonable.
Maybe you strike it to the, I mean, I don't know, like something.
The other thing is that's a private walkway, somebody else's.
Yeah, there's issues. With everything, with everything you said, I know we're not talking about parking, but you mentioned there's all of that parking lot out there and you have such a good relationship with Brookdale and we're trying to reduce parking. And it's not like, oh, I want to visit, I, you know, whatever, but could that be banked parking essentially?
Cross easement.
Yeah, cross easement, so just something to think about. Yeah.
I think we'll, we'll definitely look at our parking requirements, lower the ratio and bang a lot more of our spaces and, and then just build them as the need arises.
It sounds like you have a good working relationship with them and they, yeah, so.
Okay.
Um, lighting, perhaps some baller lights or some marking lights on the paths would be really nice for people to get out in good weather or.
Well, every, everything in the front will be illuminated, the building in the back, I guess that's kind of a question for you, if in the back, how much lighting do you wanna have by people's back windows?
Well. So here's the thing with the lighting, could it be done in more of a toned down residential way? Versus like a commercial lighting way, lower to the ground. The building, I guess you discussed about, you know, on a transmission and admission of, you know, lighting through the windows, something, I'd like to hear more about that, um, but parking lot lighting, that kind of thing, can there be path lighting on the sidewalks versus like big flood, like, I didn't look at the photometric, to be honest, um, I think you've had one.
Yep.
But that it could be turned down, um, a little bit more and have more stuff.
I. I, I believe we used much less, um, parking lot lights, we just used what we needed to use, and then we used low ballards along the front sidewalk to illuminate the pathway. I will verify that, but if we didn't, I think that's easier to incorporate that along the sidewalk.
These are the little details, I think, we should get.
We also used illumination on the building to wash the stone, um, and that provides like more walkways as well.
But is that in keeping with what is more of a residential thing?
But it's, it's ground lighting coming up.
Right, but it's flat, it's on the, it's splashing on the building?
Well, it's on the, it's attached to the social washing and stuff.
Their wall sconces, wall sconces lighting the sidewalks, they post down.
Right. We're not, we're not projecting all that at all.
Because those things might be something that would be good to consider with regards to unnecessary light in a residential area.
Yeah, we're not uplighting our facades, we're just downlighting, uh, wall sconces on the wall that are downlighting onto the sidewalk.
Oh. Okay, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, are there gonna be trashcans and things like that around outside for people? These are the things I'd really like to see on the plan, even just because then it's there.
Well, the back of the patio will, and front entry definitely will.
But like if you've got a pickleball court and a little pavilion and stuff, people are gonna be bringing.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have a well-maintained maintenance crew, so I, I agree, there would be one there, on the back, we're still programming the pickleball area.
I know it's early in your process to have any of that stuff, but I'd like to get it out there.
No, that would definitely, yeah, we could make that.
Um. Is, this is the detail, but the trashcan enclosure is chain link, can you make that nicer?
No, it would be, uh, that's, that shouldn't be like, oh, you know what, it's a, it could, if it is chain link, we put the privacy slats in it, but if you prefer wood, we can do wood. I don't like the vinyl, cause it looks good for three weeks, and then it shatters in the winter, and it falls apart, but if you'd like, if there's a preference for wood, we could do that.
I mean, I would just.
I like the wood personally.
I don't know, I, I don't feel comfortable making that, you know, like, I, yeah, I'm not sure, but I feel strongly. The chain link, it's right where you've got a walking path, and it's just one of those.
No, that's a, that's a, a carryover from a lot of our municipal projects, we put, it's the most durable, uh, a higher, more challenging environment.
Like. Yeah.
The chain link holds up, right here, you're not gonna have fifty-five little dandles, so it's, it's gonna be pretty, pretty, it's on time, maybe.
Good.
You never.
That's what we're trying to do. Um.
That'd be dead by the time.
You talked about the sign, I think you moved it up closer to the building, I see the change in the front patio, I think that's really nice, is there a traffic study done?
Yes, that was submitted during the meeting.
Yeah, it's on the line, okay. I'm guessing it, there's a problem, nobody says that, that, so, yeah, that's.
We're the lowest use for the side pass.
Oh, um. So I come up with this question a lot, um, but the landscaping portion of it, what's your plan for the wall, the facade, the slope in the back? Are you gonna try any revegetation efforts in there? It looks pretty barren.
We're, we're really trying to respect the slope stabilization study, so what I think, what I'd like to do is leave it alone, cause that's pretty much what, if you have technical reasons, why.
Right. Yeah. See, we have our recommendation and to leave it.
Yeah, but, but what I, what I would like to do, Aaron, is, is, you know, the goal is not to just do, to, to nothing, but like the pickleball courts are, I'd like to have a couple of shade trees, maybe do a couple of groupings, maybe some red twig dogwood and get some grasses. So we're gonna, you know, the, the boulder wall that we use for stabilization at the bottom of the slope, that's gonna be the devising line between, it's like when you go to, you've been to the beaches, those are the sandines, we're gonna, we're gonna protect sandy slope, we're not gonna go on it. And then everything from the boulder protection wall to the building face, we're gonna do enhancement planting, so there'll be shade trees, and if that's not shown on the plan, we're still between, uh, you know, Bill and Tom and Anthony, we're working on, but like the pickleball area, we, we're not just gonna come and say, go play pickleball in the sun, there'll be a little picnic bench area, there is.
You're gonna cover it?
There's gonna be, not gonna cover the pickleball court, but we'll have umbrellas and or a, a little shade structure, so those are details.
So there's gonna be like a patio?
Yeah, we'll have a patio, so the next group that's waiting to play, they'll be.
You could show all that?
We will, we're, those are things we're working on.
Okay.
We can, you know, I think we can, we'll add those for the next drawing, which.
It's, it's really a lifestyle, what we're trying to create, a three D, but it's a lifestyle for fifty-five and.
Those amenities will be built here, we're not, we're not just throwing a white rug in.
Yeah. Well, that was something I had on here, was that a lot of it says like, hurdle by owner, fire pit by owner, like, I think, at least for me, I'd really like to see the details of those things, if they're gonna be built and part of the plan.
What, what I, what I'd like to do between now and when we're ready for site plan approval, is just, just show representative images, and as, and as we get closer to site plan approval, then, then I'd love to, to sit down and final, find tune it.
That's. I think that those kind of images to get the idea out of what you're looking for.
Yeah. But we're gonna do it, because we, we need that, it's gonna help with the rest, it's gonna help make the, uh.
Sure, regular markings is for that, yeah.
We need to track the place, those are great, good comments, if you wanna get to it.
As far as the landscape, I have, like, one more thing.
Okay.
It might be a nice opportunity to try some kind of, um, stuff that, instead of replicating the stuff we see everywhere with the soil nutrients being probably pretty low, and the, the type of material that you have there, we're not sure you'd know every specific detail about, which is great, it might be an opportunity for some other types of plantings that you wouldn't normally see around, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, we, we do, again, you know, we got the, the, I call it the representative images, I call this representative planning, planning plan, because until, until we're done with the layout, and you're done with the comments, I'll, I mean, not you personally. It's give and take, we'll, we'll do a final plan, but I.
But you could do more, you know, things that are less water, less nutrients.
Oh, yeah, we will, yeah, yeah.
Like that kind of stuff, I think it's a great opportunity to do that, and you also really need to bring in tons and tons of organic material and stuff on the soil.
No, you, you're right, like, back by the pickleball court.
Yeah, back by all the base of that wall, all that there.
Things that don't need a lot of water, we need grasses and gerbers, and that natural plant area, yeah, we'll.
Grass, veggies, and you could do a, yeah, really nice thing, like, all of that that you don't see around a lot, that could be a real asset.
Hmm.
Um, okay, that's, that's it, oh, one more question, when you size these things, did you, um, include how many people you thought, like, I was looking at the stuff in the inside. Do you know how many people you expect to use these kind of things, or are you basing that with other areas and one ones?
Yeah, yeah, other senior living facilities that kind of estimate kind of proportion of public amenity space, um, the majority of, of senior living facilities really like to occupy the first floor space, and lobby space is much larger than you typically find in a residential community. You have several pockets of different seating areas within a much larger lobby space, as well as the outdoor patio spaces. The one in the back is covered on the lower level and then open on the upper floor, so it's a two-level patio on the backside, I don't know if you understand, I'm remembering. Yeah. That's the patio on the back.
I don't, um, I don't know if anyone else has any comments or questions, um. Uh, one, two, so.
You wanna go first, Aaron?
Go, Arnie.
It's been a long tangent, Steve, that, and one of the things I wanted to review with you is, has the fire department given you the okay, to be building it on the fire?
I have not personally heard from the fire department, do we know if it's made in front of them?
We can reach out now that we have a new plan, with the, now that there's a circulation change, I'd, I'd be more than comfortable, but, but we'll do that, that's okay. By code, it's gonna be required for cycling.
By fire code, they need access to a hundred percent of the longest one, and we meet that, and the extended vertical share element is above fourteen feet, which is the height unique clearance for emergency vehicles to pass under, so we meet the requirements.
Yeah, we have the, we have the, the fire truck, uh, dimensions, we'll put that in our, our ash tow path of travel, and add a narrative that, you know, if you give me that narrative, Anthony will submit a package, and that's something we want for site plan approval of the project anyway, so we'll do that.
For those of us who'd like to read, could I ask you for a copy of the GeoTech Report?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Read it twice, cause I didn't get it the first time.
Go ahead.
That was gonna be one of my questions, because the fire department may want a road win behind the building, um, to get access to that. So that is very important to check in with the fire department.
Yep.
The other thing I was gonna say, and, and Valerie and I agree on a lot of things, but I don't think it's this board's job to redesign a project. And I think we need to be very careful about what our requests are, um, and how they're presented, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I did wanna mention one thing that we heard from our planner comment, uh, that, and I was thinking, I pulled up the planting plan, um, he, one of his suggestions was to think about was along this northern sidewalk portion, which I know is on the Brookdale side. Um, planting some street trees along there, so I didn't see those on the planting plan, but just again, a suggestion from the planner to, to consider.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, actually, we didn't, we didn't get a full survey over there, but I can have my field guide.
Yeah, I hope that's possible.
We'll measure what existing trees are there, and, and that's not a problem, we'll, we'll take.
Yeah, just to, yeah, okay, that was my only other, that was the thing, did anyone, David, Doug?
Yep.
Okay.
About, uh, um, what we had talked about, I think we're, um, we need to see, get some of these things ironed out before a public hearing, as much as I wanna hear from the public. Um, but I wanna make sure we've got, like, what you guys were talking about, as far as like that full, you know, getting that full set in, and we need to get the PUD stuff straight in the way on the town board, um, so in the meantime, though, if you wanna work and incorporate any of the suggestions, or, you know, um, uh, for the site plan, and get some of those things cleaned up and, and.
It's a, the classic, the classic question, you know, the next meeting, next submission day.
So, so, I, I hate to like, ha- hesitate on it, only because the way the dates fall, we do only have one meeting in May. So the, if we push, the public hearing would be more in, in June timeframe at this point.
Do you know what date it's May?
May twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah, so, um, our next week, we do have one more in April, but the deadline is Wednesday.
So we're just gonna. That's fine.
So, um, yeah, so May twelve would be the next, the next meeting, which the deadline for that, Lisa, is, I don't even have that one on the top.
April period.
Yes, we can definitely do that, and I, I like that, that's, we have a reason, a, a good amount of time to incorporate a lot of things.
Okay, and we'll get our comments to Jamie for the PUD, so then, and she can forward those on, and we can kind of see what they, how they do that on for the PUD, but I know they wanna, you know, make the changes necessary if, if needed, and get that done.
Valerie, do you think we need, PUD, PUD needs to resolve the town before we go to public hearing?
I think there's a lot out there right now that means, yeah, that before we hear from the public, I think we need to know what is that exactly is in the PUD, if there's comments, you know, related to that, so. I do, but, but I've heard from the town board that they would, they would be able to move it quickly on this.
First, I think, to avoid back and forth and lack of clarity exactly running out, we need to know, the town has to have a PUD based on whatever comments.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, I mean, but like Rich and, you know, Eric were pointing out, like, yeah, we do need to know that, you know, the number of units has to come there, we wanna make sure we have the right name, it sounds like it's my rich senior.
Well, is. Is your thought that would require an amendment to the PUD or other, so.
Um, I think, just an amendment, yeah, that's what I was, what John Dear.
Okay, good, that's, that's.
Exactly that.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Had mentioned, yeah.
Right, okay.
Can we also, like, do a bit, revisions and the like, can we please follow what we haven't followed in the past? Got a cloud, the different areas on there, gotta make sure the dates are correct on the latest one, on all the drawings, so that we have the latest drawing. So we don't confuse it with what we were looking at from the previous drawing.
You want to.
All the standard, I just.
Do you wanna see revision clouds on this next step of revision?
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, but.
We'll be careful with that one.
I'm gonna cloud the whole, I'm gonna cloud the whole site.
I, I don't see, I like, I'd like to see something referred to.
No, that'd be, that's a dangerous slippery slope.
I do not want to see something referred to, to a previous drawing that was not approved, and all of a sudden, we're looking at a drawing that is out of date, that's what I mean.
Sure. It's a, no, I, I completely understand that, and I think because we're going to revise the PUD and update that, I think a clean set of drawings that just, uh, reflect that, I think would be a clean break to just do that, and then if any changes come after that, maybe we talk about it.
Fine. Fine.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, cause if I cloud the site drawings, it's gonna be like trees everywhere, it might like, but it wouldn't be, I.
And then we, yeah, yeah. We, we've talked about this before.
Yeah.
Do we have done, have you done with the town, how, is this going to be the same thing about how we don't like to see proposed?
I don't think the code speaks to, um, different design professionals, how they entail their own Q A Q C, internal to their organization. It's, it's a reasonable request, David asked, and it's reasonable that Anthony answered it professionally, so, yeah, I, I can address that.
I, I don't care about clouding or not, as long as I have a complete set of drawings with the actual dates, revisions on them, and where, what, what was the.
What's that?
That, right, that's, that's my whole point, I did, I did not want you guys to go forward reviewing.
Thank you.
You know, it's, we have some uphill work to do, we had, we had a lot of creative input tonight, we wanna incorporate that.
I'm taking trees into account, so.
Doug, are we able to share John's, you know, what?
Thank you.
That, that, my understanding was it was a set up, so.
Alright, not to the board, but with.
Oh, sure, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so do you mind, can we share that, something from our plan?
There's been more to talk about already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys very much, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is Steven, and I'm, tell me, this is the draft, Mitchell, um, Steven Mitchell, fifty-one ninety-one Townton Road, and yes, um. This is on our agenda for an initial payment payment, uh, for a two lot subdivision, by the same address, and it's act number zero nine nine point dash zero two, dash seventeen point three, um, and I guess I'm here to speak, so please let us know what you, what to do.
Um, my name's Jason Penoyer, um, from Penoyer Builders, I'm representing a file for the tree density, Mitchell, um, fifty-one ninety-one Townton Road. Um, the existing house is on just under five acres, four point eight six, full acres, uh, looking to subdivide into two separate lots. Um, existing house would become two point seven two acres, new lot would be two point four eight acres, um, uh, paid away for some additional, um, housing for them.
Okay. Um, it's my understanding, uh, that we have Jamie still on, um, and Doug, and you can speak to it too, but we do need, um, some easements.
Right. So, the easement, obviously, you're only going to have one driveway, so a condition of subdivision would be a declaration of easement, obviously, because it's still the same owner. And it would have language, um, that it would be permanent, and it needs, it may need to meet, meets and bounds, um, you know, to the extent that it's shared or otherwise delineated on the map specifically and referred to, you follow what I mean?
Yep.
Yep, and then, um, it needs to have language that it cannot be altered, um, or moved, and that it, it basically is in connection with this subdivision approval, so that it can't be moved or relocated or modified without the town's permission.
Okay, so I wanted to get that out there first, and then, um, if, if we're good on that, if you understand what we do for that, um,
Yep.
then I'll open it up to the board, for other comments and questions.
Right, this, this kind of goes along the same lines with easements.
Sure.
Where, where is the existing septic tank in Leechville?
Uh, so, back left corner. That's small, yeah, that's, um, yeah, so, right here, should have happened, uh, yeah. Also here, this is the septic system here, this is proposed over here, so.
Where, where are the wells?
Um, there's no well here, um, the well's right here.
Oh, hi.
Right here, right here.
And then we can go as well to the, same, on this, you know, the smaller area you had there.
Sorry, I looked at the small map and it's, but.
There's some, there's a.
There's a.
Houses. Here, it's up here, that's, the house is located differently.
Those are proposed.
Yeah.
There's a difference between this and this.
No, but it's, it's.
The house is different.
No, something, so, so, something.
This, this, down here is water. This, the box is down here. Or nothing here, that's all.
Yeah.
Oh, it's just two existing houses up here.
This doesn't, this location does not appear to be this location.
I think it's.
That's all.
Yeah.
It's just like moved down here.
Right, they have, they have to have a board help to approve for any location.
Right, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
For both of them, we, we.
What's the frontage of the, the new lot? Yeah, Rich, hey, Jason. Jason, it, it was on a survey where it showed that the septic field was gonna be on Don Martin's old property.
Um, no, so he, there's an easement there.
That's an existing one.
He's got his existing, Don Martin's property, he has an existing easement on Steve, Steve's property.
That's an easement. You hear that, Jamie?
Say that again, Doug.
Jason, Jason just said that, 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 uh, lease deal we saw was on Don Martin's property. He said that's an easement, it's an existing easement.
Okay. That's, that's fine.
Okay.
Where it cuts the corner onto this property, it has thirty foot easement for the purpose of accommodating. So which is the one that is current, is correct, as far as.
The big one in your hand.
Our driveway, sorry, are we gonna get?
It would be the next, oh, the main driveway.
You can show that on the next drawing.
Sure.
Um, where are they gonna park?
Um, just in the driveway. I don't even think that, maybe, they would only require one car for, um, care, care help.
No, but.
No.
So, that would be something. So, do we, there's a creep on here, Doug, do we have to just get that one?
Um, I don't believe something, it doesn't show up on the mapper.
Where?
Carol rule, kind of lap that we're creating, you know. We, we ask for building envelopes, but we don't like seeing a proposed building out there, correct? It's usually what we.
On the subdivision plan?
Yeah. So, they, we should do the same thing here, across the subdivision.
Well, is this the subdivision plan or the survey? This is the, the big one as well, the big one is the.
The survey. Survey.
Survey.
Right.
But that's also their site plan, because this one isn't correct.
Survey.
So we, we, is that except, do we need a survey and a site plan? Or these are more. If you have the survey and not having.
Right.
It looks like you kinda got the survey and your site plan part of a site plan sheet. Thanks.
Um, yeah, so.
A little bit of survey.
Requirement was to plot, plot, uh, plot a new building on, on a survey, so that's what we submitted.
Okay. That's what you did, yeah.
That's what we submitted.
Yep, well, that's, who is your, ask.
Let's just begin with, um, town code enforcement.
Okay, Doug, what, we are going to have it?
So.
Well, I need you to go ahead and on this sub survey.
It, it needs, it, it should not be on the, um, on the ultimate subdivision map. But it's there for informational purposes. Ultimately, he'll have to go with a separate survey of just this lot to go get his building permit for.
So Jamie, I think, Jason, what you're showing here, right, it's two lot subdivision, one lot is two point four eight acres. And the other's two point seven two, um, that's the subdivision map. Jamie, I don't know if we want, I mean, what, what the survey is showing on here, Ridge's point is a proposed house.
Correct.
Would we rather have a building envelope or nothing for the proposed house?
I'm going to, I'm going to say that for the final, um, for the final subdivision plan, we don't want the house on it at all. But it's for our information, because as a board, you wanna make sure it's an orderly development of land, that something can be built there, et cetera.
Okay.
So, yes, thank you for having it on there. And then whatever permits or whatever size it's gonna be, because we don't want it to appear that this board has approved the, the residential, um, building, they're not.
Oh.
Or any features, you know, once it's filed.
With that, wouldn't this first be a subdivision plan and then, I mean, I guess, I don't know.
Well, I think what we're looking at, Jamie, is a two lot subdivision, and basically all we need is the access agreement for the driveway for.
Correct.
For the house that's going on there, right? We don't necessarily need a site plan, other than for.
Oh, no, we do not need the site plan, we don't mark the site plan.
That's just for informational purposes.
Correct.
So all we need is, Jason, right, I mean, they're gonna share the driveway, and all you need is an access agreement.
And, and, and the, the current improvements should be shown, the ones on the other lot should be shown.
Right, yeah.
But not future improvements.
Right, so no driveway, no parking, no house.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, and then the rest would be the function of the building, and Jason pulls a building permit.
Because don't you need to know what.
Then you, to fill the driveway or grab whatever, or whatever.
For, like, emergency access in number one, in case a rest situation.
Yeah, that's not for us to decide.
So, so it'll get, wherever the code enforcement takes care of that.
Correct.
So, I, I think generally, it, it looks good, um, other than just being, they share the driveway behind us.
Do we have a meets and bounds description of each of the parcels? We do like to have those on file.
That's separate, well, yeah, it's on, it's on the survey.
Okay.
We don't have a narrative.
Yeah, we don't have a narrative. But it's on the survey.
It's on the survey.
The narrative's on the survey?
No, no.
No.
Well, but the meets and bounds, yes, so we need, we do need meets and bounds descriptions of those.
Meets, yeah.
Yeah.
But I do see that, that would be easy to produce, because the, the meets and bounds are already on this survey, which is great.
Two and a half acres. You do that more than I.
Can we just go back to the meets and bounds? What, what, what is the requirement that you're looking for for that?
Just legal descriptions. And, and lot one, you're gonna have a lot one, and you're gonna have a lot two, or a lot A, or a lot B, I can't, I can't see, it's not blown up enough for me to see.
He does have, he does have a lot of them too.
I can show you an example from. A different, the first item on our agenda, you wanna see it after?
Yeah, that's, please.
Okay.
And then, and then it'll go right, it's not gonna be a preliminary, it's gonna be a final map. I see you have it labeled pro- preliminary, but it's.
And does it have, do we have to have it say subdivision map as opposed to, I mean, it does say two lot subdivision lands in Woodchill, but.
Yeah, that, that's enough, that's, that's.
Okay, and we don't need a separate survey?
It's the, no, it's the, we, the subdivision map is the survey. Is there, Doug, I can't see that, I, is there a surveyor's, um, stamp on that?
It's Jeff Moore, yeah, I, I worked with Jeff before, he does, he does a pretty decent job.
Thank you.
He's got his file out here for his signature, so yes.
So this, this. This, this should be ready for a public hearing, so.
You think?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can just. You can set the public hearing?
Yes, I mean, there's a couple of minor things here, I, the only reason I'm saying that, I, I leave that to you, Valerie, but. We're gonna have a very congested agenda in, in May, and if we can do this, if he can get us, you know, the, the final plan, you know, maybe. A week before, it's, it's a pretty simple matter, but that's up, that's up to you.
Well, so we're not, okay, we're not necessarily doing a public hearing.
Oh, yes.
We did not schedule a public hearing for May 12, so we could schedule the public hearing for May 12.
Well, I was saying, do we wanna do it sooner?
Or do we wanna do it on the twenty-first? I guess, when do we, when do we need the information from him in order to have?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, can you get it in?
Next Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Well, I mean, if.
I could try.
If you can get it in, we can get it on and I, and knock it off, so to speak, but. Um, as you can see, we're, we have, we have, you haven't even seen the rest of it, we have a very robust agenda as we're coming along into May. We only.
I, I'd say, I'd say we try to make it for April.
Yeah. Can we do that, don't let notice and all that?
Yep.
Come on, let me go to it. Okay.
Jason, this is a little ahead of the schedule here, looking at the floor plan of the house, it's, it's a duplex. Identical mirror image of each other, like, two people who weren't married are gonna live there in two separate apartments.
Or married.
Or married, okay. Wait a second.
And then, to humor.
These are service people to take care of the Woodchills.
Yes.
Okay, it, it's, it's just a, it's the first time I've seen something like that, it's a wonderful idea. So they don't have to go into a home of some sort, so they, they can, they can live in place.
Facility. Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so, I'll take a motion to set the public hearing for twenty-first of April.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Aaron, second by Rich, all in favor?
I'm all right.
Any opposed? Okay, so we, motion carries, we've set the public hearing for April twenty-first, um, and.
We've got deadlines, so we should.
Yeah, the deadline for, is, but. You can, you can work with these stuff.
Yep.
It's not a, a lot that needs to be included, and I'll just show you this if you really wanna. Right up there.
Do you think?
Yeah. Do we have anything else on that, or it should be over? Alright.
It's.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Another question for this project, we, we've been some time reviewing accessory glowing, that's never pursued into the town in a full way.
Thank you. Uh.
When I looked at this, I wanted to, it's accessory glowing, but I don't think we, it's in our code.
I know, I don't. And it's not in R A.
Can you get in the code? Is that what you're trying to, I'm not, I can't answer that question.
I don't think it's been approved, I don't think it.
I can't remember where it's at, I thought they approved this, I thought.
I couldn't find it in the zoning.
Don't quote me on that. Uh.
I think it's been approved, we're probably guys in the.
Yeah.
What's the, um.
I think it's.
We're probably as a company with E code, yeah.
E code's not, yeah.
I know, I know, our code was, there is about it.
I know that's, yeah, but it's.
I saw, I saw.
Isn't it only for the county year?
Yeah, it's not in the E code yet, for some reason.
Okay, yeah, it takes a while for that.
I mentioned it in the.
But even so, this, for example, I was thinking the same thing, like, oh, like, for being.
But it's only one, so that.
Cause then they wouldn't have to do the subdivision necessarily, but, it's not, I'm, right, it's not R A, correct, it's not eleven R A.
Correct.
So, so.
Okay.
No. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. The next item on our agenda is Tim Cooley, um, this is an initial presentation for a site plan and special use permit for a pole barn at eighty-five sixty-eight East Tennessee Street. Um, this is tax map number zero nine one point dash zero two, dash zero two twenty-two. Take it back.
You guys look at, do you guys look at these plans?
Yes.
This is a tough one, so, just let me describe my client a little bit. He's a, uh, semi-retired landscaper, he owns, uh, he has a good picture, show the pictures. He owns this building on the edge of Chitnango, eighty-five sixty-eight, East Tennessee Turnpike. He's got a lot of things in the yard. It's, it's not like, um, anyway. This building in the back, that garage has been removed, and he has a lot of things, a lot of cars and vehicles in the front, and he's, he's a retired landscaper. He still does some landscaping, nobody works for him, he doesn't have clients come, he's, he's an individual person, so he wants to get everything in the building. And he goes, he goes, I wanna get site plan approval for just my building, it doesn't work like that, you gotta look at other things, so. Let me tell you what we did talk him into, and then we'll go from there, so. Along his front edge, it's all gravel, we said, as soon as you touch this, you're gonna, D O T's gonna wanna have a controlled degress, so we talked him into going from all gravel. To a twenty-four foot entrance and, and replanting the difference. Um, so, so we did that. The second thing we told him was, we put him building up. Here's the road in the back, you have residential property here, and this is a commercial, it's like a little gift shop type place there, so. We said, well, you're gonna have to put, probably put some screening on both sides, we put some, three evergreens over here and some narrower arborites over here. So we did that. Um, within the right of way, you know, this is a state road, and this existing building's only five feet from the, the road, I really didn't wanna. You know, if I, I can't put trees within the property line, D O T calls that a, you know, deadly fixed object, so we don't wanna do that.
That's a similar situation with that.
So, for his pole barn, he said, well, you're, it's gravel now, don't wanna increase the, uh, impervious area, so we reduced the impervious area by three percent, so we're trying. This guy's got limited resources, so we're trying not to get into a, a SWIP and a stormwater facility, cause the property is such, it comes. Comes level with the road a little bit, and it just drops straight down, so we're trying to keep within the existing, uh, platter, so we did that. He, he doesn't have like a lot of high use for this, he's, he's, it's just limited hard time landscaping, he's in his sixties, he doesn't even take on heavy jobs anymore, he's got some health issues. But he, but he wants, he has some older trucks that he uses, and people stop by and look at his old trucks all the time, he has. He has a snow fence around his, his, his trucks, so he wants to get them inside, so I think that's a, a benefit to the town, and not having people. People stop, he's, he's, he's actually had people sit, and he doesn't have locks on some of the vehicles, they, they sit in his trucks and they're taking pictures, the people are addicted to old vehicles, I guess. So anyway, wants to clean.
They look like the cars movie, so, I think.
Yeah. So the other thing I said was, it's nice that you want gravel, but.
Tractor dusters.
Yeah, tractor dusters, it's nice that you want gravel everything, but I know the county's gonna want pavement at least at the entrance, so I said, you should have entrance. Within, uh, from the edge of the road to the property line should be paved, and then maybe if we could agree to put gravel within the property, and then the stormwater, we're not doing any. Big, uh, erosion control stormwater facility, but maybe we have a low point in the middle of parking lot, we put a drywall in, have a perforated pipe, it fills up, some goes in the ground and some spills and goes out beside. Um, so we did talk to Tom, codes officer, he advised that we present the path of a, a special use permit. Cause it doesn't, if you look at this area, it's kinda transitional, coming into Chitnango. On the right is a lot of residential, and, and then this is the first commercial property, and then the next property's commercial, and then you go through Chitnango, and it's.
You have a little stone building next door to him, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a little.
Somebody lived there.
It's like a little gift, yeah, I don't know, it's a gift shop.
All sorts of stuff, I know.
So it's kind of a no man's land, and, you know, I didn't design this building, but. It's, it's a shed, the one thing is a thirty foot front yard setback, I think this is actually darker than it really is, he didn't have a quality printer. But the front yard setback is thirty feet, and this is back another twenty-five, so it's fifty-five foot setback, so he's. So, I'm just telling it like it is, we're trying to. Trying to.
Yeah.
Work, work with it a little bit, um, that's my, so I'm ready for comments, I really don't know what else to say.
Well, we've had, uh, John Steinmetz, our planner, also looked at this site as well, gave us some feedback. One of the things we noticed right off the bat is the, uh, the drawings, the sketch that we got does not match.
Yeah.
The bearings.
Yeah.
So we definitely need to see.
Yes.
That all correspond appropriately and match up.
Yeah.
Um, like doors and windows aren't, and garage doors aren't in the right, the same.
It's kinda like when you're trying to get a photometric, I don't know, lesser experienced, they don't, they don't give you the update, they don't have the capabilities, they, they, they're giving me the stock model, not the actual model, but I will.
Right, yeah.
explain to him that.
Yeah, it's got like three garage doors in the sketch, for example, and two on the, I think it's two on the drawings, they're rendering to me.
Yeah, so we were there.
Any public utilities to be?
Things, you know, it's going to have lighting, but uh it's just, you know, it's not, no bathroom, it's just, it's just storing storing materials
They've got water. No water.
And, you know, it's a it's a home base, he's parking, getting stuff out of the parking lot into the building, he takes on the job, he he goes there and mounts up his materials and he leaves, or he works on his.
Is the existing building also just a storage building?
That's that's where he does, there's a sign on the building for for, I don't know what exactly what the sign says, but he does some small landscaping jobs out of it, so we're not adding any signage, it's.
Is there like an office in there or?
Yeah, I can.
I guess, with the project, there's no water, but maybe, there's no water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
If there's water, that means there's heat.
So I had a, Alex and I, I'm not fully up to speed in this, had someone else in my office work on it, but my, I just kind of wanted to get a a base point, a starting point, to see if I'm on the right track with the, you know, I'll certainly update the building and explain a little more what's in the existing building, that that's no problem.
If our memo hasn't been set this guy, I would like to know if you said that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You said what?
Mm-hmm.
What did you say? You have to tell us the whole story.
Just set the memo, yeah, John Steinmetz.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, yeah, whatever you can, I I actually live fairly close to this building, so I drive by it pretty much every time I go somewhere. Um, but, so I think whatever you can do within our constraints to make it look nicer would be, you know, would be good, I think, I mean, because it is in a transitional area, but I think it's an opportunity with the comprehensive plan to, you know, make it fit into the area a little bit, a little bit better, um. And we'll send the memo, but I do like the idea too that John suggested about doing even a little something to the existing building to match it a little bit better with whatever building is going to be on there, either painting or I and I know it sounds like it's financially location, so.
I appreciate, I mean.
Painting rather than just sending.
I totally appreciate that, because, you know, for him to put a stone base on it or, you know, add window treatment, he's, so.
Yeah. Yeah, like, it reminds me, it does remind me a little of the cannabis site, and I'm not, I'm not sure if you're familiar with there that is, but it's just outside of Bill Jimenez, like, um, um, I don't know. It's similar, yes, it's a one thing I, yeah.
How many limestone ponds?
Um, across from like the Dollar Tree plaza there.
Yeah, okay.
So we asked them to just kind of do the same kind of thing to the site, and they're in the right of way as well, and it's an older building, but um, they did some trim on it, they painted, and I was just there just, not there yesterday, I was across the street yesterday, and it does. I just came out. Pretty tall with the, I I kind of wanted to go and ask if it would look like.
No, I I told my同事.
Now, you're fucking old with you with your god.
I wanted to check it out, actually, to see like when I was like.
It's the oldest mom in the neighborhood.
And I, I mean, they put the trim on the apron and they did trim with a red and paint around the windows and, um,
What's nice is that.
So they're still doing some improvement, and now that it's spring, they can do some of the landscaping improvements.
Just remember, Bill, we're only one.
But anyway, so, I mean, it it it, you know, it's an opportunity within reason.
I could have someone on my staff take a picture of the existing building, street view, and then pick out a color with the client and see if we can play games with the color and the trim.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this needs to be functional for what he needs, and so, um, yeah, I don't, I have other people have some other comments too, I don't know. But we can send that memo.
Yeah, that'd be.
No one looking at me.
And then I would like to set a public hearing for this one as well. Um, I think this is great, um, that they're doing this, I think that you can be able to talk them into a great improvement.
Right at the end of this budget, like, I think I can push them into a little more paint and get it done.
But even without that, like, that's not a big deal, um, for me, I think that it's, it's kind of a neat little site and that stuff. I think that it's great that he wants to do this, and um, these are good improvements, the, even just the curfew heel of um, pulling that stone back and giving a private, you know, pre for entrance and um, my questions would be.
Especially on that road, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that alone is huge.
Yeah, because people, some people speed, obviously you're supposed to slow down there, but most people not.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and the light is coming up and my scene is a special little, I live near there too, I get it, like, it's a neat little spot, it's really old. Anyway, um, would this be a hot spot?
Not that, um, I guess I can check the mapping, I mean, he's he's been there for years.
But it's vehicle stored, I just want to make sure that that's not a problem.
No, he's not, he's storing vehicles, he's not doing, uh.
Nothing outside of tanks and that?
No.
Um, because of the the catchment, you know, the um catch basin and all that, instead of having a drywall.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
I just want to make sure nothing accidentally got down there.
Yeah, no, he's not doing
Okay.
that type of work, you know, he might maybe doing oil change in his garage, but he's not, you know, draining gas tanks and.
Okay. Um, is that there, is that a wetland concern at all?
Well, we're trying to stay out thick, we're we're staying, we're keeping everything out of the embankment, we're not going down to the.
Okay. Yeah, because we do, um. Are they going to have any light?
We did do a little photometrics plan showing the, we told them you're going to need that, so I don't know if that was submitted or not.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the other.
Yeah.
I had it.
You did?
Yeah. You want to? I hold on.
It's just a couple of light facts, it's not, we were not doing a freestanding poll, it's just a, just security lighting more than anything.
That was it, because that's the way we're going to follow.
Well, I mean, we have the information, it's it's not ready for a a full review, but I just wanted to he's being judicious with his design money, so I said, well, let's get a heat check and see where we stand, and I'll come back and then we can decide if you want to go ahead, and I think I think the comments have given me thus far are very reasonable, and I think I'll be willing to.
So so a couple of things that we had in this memo, um for the comprehensive plan, this is intended to be a low density residential area, north of the turnpike, and then south of south, north of the turnpike, agricultural and rural residential, right, so so generally, you want this area, like Aaron just said, to to keep the the flavor of the my state area of residential, so when they come back, right, you probably want some type of architect that looks somewhat residential with a landscaping plan that's that's in line with that, and then the other thing, when we look at the special use permit, I think it's that far here, um, you know, one of the things we should look at um is that um we we should really clarify for future users of this site potentially that that we wish to avoid any unintended use for vehicle repair or vehicle sales.
Mm-hmm.
Right, because as it sits right now, right, if I drove by, which I did, right, I see these old vehicles, right, and they kind of look cool. But it could very well turn to what the other side of the road is where there's vehicle sales, that maybe don't look so cool.
That's the problem, that's what it looks like, that's why people are stopping.
Yeah, okay. Any any other comments from the board?
Um, did this go to county?
Yeah.
So a pub, I mean, I I don't think it's ready for a public hearing, if it's not, yeah.
Uh, no.
We'll come back with this, we'll come back with this mission.
They're going to come back anyway.
Your review and county review all at the same time.
Okay.
It's just a heat check.
Okay.
Okay.
There for memo, it's just good.
Anybody else?
Good for Mary comments.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
He's a nice guy, he's trying to help them. And that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for a public hearing.
Well, Tom is very helpful with codes, you know, you you kind of sense that you see a labor, if you're kind of a dwainer, you gotta and take a lane and see how it goes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it always.
I don't know, whoever filled out the, they, whoever filled out the special use permit after.
Yeah, it's Alex, my office.
Very good, yeah.
Well, we're, well, it's training, you know, we're kind of know the direction you guys are going, so I wanted to give you full information, we're learning.
And you got that for people, I think.
No, it's it's good stuff. Oh, and actually with with hybrids, you actually helped me tonight, because we've been, a lot of times developers are ambiguous, because they don't want to commit to finishes, but when you guys bring up what did what did, what types of trees are you using, are you doing the pickleball, they they say, well, maybe, I'm like, well, this isn't a maybe meeting, you need to show what's in, what's out. So so that was, helps Anthony and I.
So you must have got the picture, yeah, the picture of what you're doing in a lot of these things.
Yeah. And then the the covered area, we don't want it to be all, you know, Anthony and I, we're going to, we're going to give you what the retaining wall looks like out front, and it wouldn't be all paved, we'll bring in some some stone boulders and some some planting and.
Yeah, I like your ideas of using the boulders, and I mean, that that was a very good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every tree, please, for some, yeah.
Yeah, that's, and then Phil's pretty resourceful, the one of the, one of the, he has his own rock crusher, so whatever we don't put in the back, he's going to crush the oversized stone, and we need fill on that site, so we can, with his crushing machine, we could use that for fill underneath the parking lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You just go test it?
Yeah, yeah, we'll we'll have a SIP run for the gradation, you know, under the building, that's going to be
a different story, yeah.
Stories that, and actually, half the building is in cut by the by the road, and then as you go towards the back, and it's a little bit of fill.
So can you use that material elsewhere on site as well?
Oh, yeah.
I was thinking after you ended about, um, and I don't know if this is meaning the part, the project part, but not being able to put a lot of pavement in the um easement, drainage easement stuff, but also feeling like having a stable path for people to get from buildings back to the pickleball and all that stuff, they're not just going to walk on the grass.
So we.
Could you crush crush the stone and use it?
Could you just crush stone, but what happens with crushed asphalt is if you don't get a clean edge, it it gets a little muddy, it gets wet, so I'm advocating for asphalt walk at the minimum, and I prefer concrete, because you get a nice clean edge like that, right?
It's always nicer.
Okay, yeah, so that's.
So you did that all the way back around?
Yeah, yeah, that was a a gravel grass access zone in the back, I told Anthony, if you're going to have a this beautiful back walkout patio, you might as, and Valerie's points, connect it to the Brookdale walkway, you might as well have a connector walk there.
Well, I mean, to the.
Be great to see it when it comes in, right, guys?
Yeah.
When you go all the way around the back pond.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Is that going to be like a nice looking pond?
It's gonna, it's gonna be grass, the perk test, you pour water in the ground and the water just gives us a quarry, so it's basically, so it's going to be dry, so.
Seems to be some really neat decorative rock bouldery outcroppie things in there.
Oh, yeah, we're going to be doing a lot of that, we got a lot of spare boulders.
That's really nice.
We're going to crush it or bury it?
All right, well, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make you a good journey.
Great, well, should be my rich son, by the way.